All right, with it being right at six o'clock, let's look at the meeting started this evening. And Jolene, can you please take a roll?
Council members Erickson.
President.
Larson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Valento.
Here.
Mayor Roberts.
Here. And if you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, we have an agenda in front of us this evening. Anyone willing to make a motion to approve?
Also move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Item five, awards, recognitions, and presentations. Uh, council, we have a couple of resolutions in front of us, recognizing, uh, the first one here, recognizing the volunteers that helped, um, with the, with the, um, corn feed that we had two weeks ago at Lakeside Park as the end of the, uh, like, uh, Arts in the Park season. Uh, so I'm just gonna name off and recognize those that helped. These, these members here were part of, are part of our Parks and Recreation Commission, Karen Moorhead, Sue Hardina, Melissa Lunmark, and Tim Gary. Uh, and then part, uh, members of our beautification group, Susan Young, Judy Hontash, Jerry Danager, Kathy Moorhead, Dee Dee Lickseidel, and Lucy Schwartz. So we appreciate that help. It was a great evening, uh, always a fun night. I think it was eleven hundred years of corn, right, Dave, that, that was given out? So, um, just a great, great time. So if anyone is willing to make a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next resolution is, uh, accepting donations to the Veterans Memorial. Uh, we had a groundbreaking on Thursday for the Veterans Memorial Project down at Lakeside Park. Had a great turnout. Uh, we had Congress, or Senator Housley there and another senator, which fails, I fail to remember that person's name, that was very vital, uh, that was present as well, as long as, as well as Bob Detmer, who was, uh, very instrumental in this project and getting state funding. So we thank all them for attending, and I would like to thank the following businesses for the recent donation. Now, this is just a, a group of, of, of many that have got donated since the beginning of this project. So this, this group that we're recognizing this evening is Winnic Supply, Morgan Stanley, Mary Duplessis Cheetah, Paul Richard Ashback, Culvers of Forest Lake, Jim Cluck, Tom Co Carpet, Marilyn Saunders, Connectus Energy, The Lions Club, Grand Casino Henkley, The American Legion Auxiliary, Gary and Evelyn Lee, Evelyn Lee, The Muskie Company Foundation, Widdow Smith, Notting and Associates. We appreciate these donations. Again, the project has got started here. Looking forward to completion later next year, and with that, I would be open to a, uh, anyone making a nomination or a, to vote for their, uh, what am I saying? A motion, sorry, a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 09082502. Resolution thanking groups, businesses, and the general public for their donations towards the Veterans Memorial Project.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is, uh, open forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak, uh, about any city issue related to the city. Um, you have up to three minutes to speak. Please leave, give us your name and address as you approach. It doesn't look like there's anyone here this evening, so we will go on to consent agenda. We have an agenda in front of us, council. Is anyone, uh, interested in making a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda items, uh, A through D.
D or E?
E. E. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, E. I'm sorry, A through E.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda pass. Our first item, uh, eight, A, Hidden Creek addition amendment request. Abby.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Roberts, members of the council. In April of this year, the city approved the third phase of Hidden Creek, a multi-phase residential subdivision. The development agreement with Headwaters Land Group was approved at that same time. Included as a provision of that development agreement was, uh, the city would not release building permits until certain, uh, development approvals or development milestones had been made. Um, to date, the milestones have not been met, but the developer has come to the city asking for a development agreement amendment, which would allow for the release of two building permits for early starts. Um, as noted in my staff report, um, in order for them to, us to release them, they would need to have at least the base course, uh, for the development and utilities put in, and neither of these lots have all of those or meet all of those requirements, because we want to see all of the mass grading done for the site before we move forward. Uh, so, um, I did put in my staff report, we recommend that we would move to deny the amendment request. I will note, the developer acknowledges that there are some grading challenges on the site and has to table this for a matter, for two more weeks. But it's up to the council if you wanna move forward with, uh, an action tonight or table it, uh, for later, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, if I just might add, um, you know, staff's recommendation to deny here is, is based on the fact that the conditions on the ground really aren't as important as the conditions being proposed in the, in the development agreement amendment. And we, we don't need to even visit the site necessarily to understand the conditions that are being proposed. We can all imagine what those conditions are, and that won't change two weeks from now, what's being proposed. And so, um, staff's recommendation will continue to be to deny this request just because the, we feel strongly that the, um, conditions laid out in the initial development agreement are very favorable and fair to having early start building permits. And I think Abby does a nice job in, in her memo here of outlining, you hate to say these catastrophic things, but what happens if the whole thing goes belly up? I mean, most of us here, I think, are old enough to remember what happened in 2008. I mean, literally, the world turned on end in a matter of, what, a month? You know, and, and pretty soon, everything that seemed obvious to us that would, okay, yeah, well, that'll eventually happen. It was not obvious that that will eventually happen very quickly, right? And you have to continue to look at those scenarios that we just, you know, if we build this house and don't have a, a road on the front yard, that's a, that's gonna be a problem, right? And, um, there's also issues of sort of like, what I would call painting us into a corner, right? You do this little lot here, and this little lot here, and then the rest of the thing goes belly up? Well, maybe those two lots were the easiest low-hanging fruits, and now we have a development that's harder and harder to get done because it makes less and less financial sense as we sort of let that scope of the, what's being done creep, right? And it's, it's death by a thousand paper cuts sometimes, but I'd rather just not start on that path towards, um, that, that, where you just start to do the low-hanging fruit, and then you end up with a development that's full of more difficult lots to, to consider. Because when the things happen like what happened in 2008, that's what comes back to you, is those, those harder-to-do developments, and, you know, that's not gonna be a good scenario for, for sure. So, um, just wanted to throw up, you know, that that is, we don't think that it's important to look at this request in terms of what's, has been done or will be done out there in two weeks. We, we understand what the, the ask is, and we just simply disagree.
Any questions, council, staff? I, I think, um, you know, the, this has been on the agenda a couple times in the last-minute poll. Um, we've, we've worked with this, this developer on another, on the other additions to make some of, you know, uh, things that we'll be willing to work with them on. Um, so I think we've been very easy to work with at this point, uh, you know. Hopefully, they can get what needs to be done here, finished here before the fall and, and move forward, because we, it's a great development out there, and we appreciate, uh, their willingness to invest in the city. But, um, I, you know, I understand staff's concerns.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're referring to, um, Administrator Stotts. I was, I was in, I was saying at the time, and there were some big developments with, uh, you know, but never, never got completed. They may, maybe they are now, but they certainly weren't there for years. So I, I would agree. I think, you know, as a council and as staff, I know that we've worked hard with this developer to accommodate their, um, requests, but I, I tend to agree with staff on this one, that it just, it doesn't make sense. Um, they need to follow through on the development agreement that we've got in place.
With that, anyone wanna make a motion?
I make a motion to move to deny the amendment request.
A motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And, uh, it's been denied. Okay. Eight C, meeting refresh, change order number one. Dave.
Yeah, Mayor and council, uh, last, uh, council meeting, we approved, uh, Phase One of the median refresh project. And after that approval, uh, beautification group, uh, Mayor Roberts and myself met with the contractor to discuss, uh, the plantings. Uh, it was kinda brought up that we'd like some more color, uh, longer in the year, and, um, and just change some plants around. So the discussion kinda went around changing out the, um, Walker's low grow with rutabia, and then the, um, day lilies with, uh, hydrangeas. So, uh, the contractor did some repricing in how many plants fit in those areas, and it ended up to be a, a reduction of $557.29. And then with that, that change order would be, uh, accepting that change order for the reduced costs and then changing those two plant species out. So what I'm looking for tonight is approval of that change order to, uh, accept the decrease in costs and then accept that, that plant change.
I'll just add a little bit. So I, in just conversations with the beautification committee and my experience in ha, in landscape, and that's what I do as, as a job, uh, that the idea was when we, when we chose these, these species, the original species, they were based on what survived fif, from fifteen years ago or ten years ago. And although they did survive, the, the concern was that, other than maybe just a couple weeks during the year, they just didn't look that good. And so, uh, working with the beautification committee, we came up with some alternatives that are gonna have just more, uh, color, longer lasting throughout the season. And so, um, that's where it went, and who'd have known that, what did we actually save $500 on the deal? So that's pretty rare. So, um, I appreciate the contractor's willingness to work with us and make that change kind of last minute, uh, so that was great. And it sounds like that didn't delay the project, and it's still gonna start on the fifteenth or thereabouts. Dave, is that correct?
Correct. He, uh, checked with the grower, and they have all the plants in stock, uh, for that change order.
All right. Any questions? Anyone? I hope I didn't make a motion on this.
I'd probably make a motion to save some money. So I'll move to approve change order number one of the median refresh project Phase One to replace the previously selected plantings of Walker's locap mint with rutabia and day lilies with Little Lime Punch hydrangeas, which reduces the project cost by 557.29.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, eight C, Veterans Memorial Change Order. Dave.
Yeah, so the, the project that got approved, I believe, the first meeting in August, uh, it went with the capstone that matched the rest of the, the stone in that project. And the Veterans Memorial Group had envisioned that there was gonna be different colors. So, um, when the contractor got that bid, they, they realized that it's a different cost and a different, you know, capstone and all that. So that change is about $7,500 for that change. Kyle met with the, the group, and they were, they're pretty strongly favored that they wanted to have that different colored capstone. Um, so that's why we're here tonight, just to be aware, we're already underfunded for this project, and this $7,500 would also just be more to the negative on that project. But it's, um, what they envisioned for that project, and we're just here tonight to see if you wanna approve that change in the capstone or, or go with the one that was spec inside the project.
Questions, uh, thoughts, council?
Visually, what, what are we talking, can you say more about what that capstone is and where that fits in the project?
You have two, two thoughts, right? I think when they designed it, the capstone being the same color between the capstone where the monument is and then on the, where the papers are. Correct, the wall. Art being the same color kinda just blends in, and then the other stuff kinda pops out. The, um, the memorial group wants different colors, just so that there's different colors or different, uh, contrast or whatever, however you wanna, wanna say that. I, I'm not a, I guess, I don't know the difference, to be completely honest with you, but they're pretty, they're pretty headstrong, and they want that color change. And I guess I, I'm, it's a change order, and it's a, it's an expense that they don't have the dollars for. So if we were to approve it, it would just be the city incurring those costs until they receive more donations and we're able to pay the city back on that.
Is that what they're doing? Are they doing any fundraising or anything like that for this at all, or?
So what they have in hand and, and our fund is what they've re, received so far. They have some, they promises or some, some other groups that say, "I'm gonna give X amount of dollars over the next X amount of years." There are also some grant funding that Kyle's chasing for, through the state of Minnesota. Um, I mean, at, at this point, they don't have the dollars to put that, that bronze memorial in there. I mean, I, it'll be, when it's done this year, they won't even have that, that memorial in the middle, just because they don't have that funding. So I, I believe we're, I can't remember off the top of my head how much below they are already in funding. So it's just, it's a decision to make.
I thought the most recent deed grant was going towards that centerpiece.
The, we have two grants right now, one for $90,000 and one for $250,000, and the project itself is about 800-some thousand now. It began about five years ago, was about $300,000, and now it's just crept up. Every year that gone by, it's just kind of slowly increased and we're getting close to a million-dollar project.
So this, so this portion that they're asking for, this will be completed this fall?
Correct. So the, the contractor would have to order that and then place that capstone this fall. The plan would be, or the, the overall project is to get everything done this fall except for the memorial in the middle, or the statue that comes out of that center sculpt, or that center sculpture and then the main capstone, so. And then, once they have funding, or once funding is available, they would purchase and, and put that in. I wish, uh, somebody from the memorial crew was here tonight, because I, like I said, I, I don't understand colors, and I don't know what that means, but they, it was spec one color, and once they got, how the, the stones came in, they, they definitely wanted the color change, and that, that would be a, a change order to the project.
Do, since we, I mean, we broke some ground on the replacing pipe, do we have until the next meeting for them to come present this, or to talk a little bit more in detail or not?
I think the, the problem is, is that there's so many things that are backordered already. I think some of the stone they ready-ordered was twelve weeks, twelve weeks away, and that'll be getting placed right at the, you know, you're getting right to that deadline where you can probably not mortar or glue stuff on to that, that sculpture.
I mean, it's horn, because this is not a, you know, compared to 800,000, it's not a significant amount of money, but it is more money that they don't have, um, which I guess I'd really be curious how they plan to cover that. But at the same time, you know, this is a monument we're doing once. I, you know, I'd rather see it get done the way that this group that's put so much time and energy into it. You know, I'd hate to see, I don't know, I guess, I, I guess I'd be in support of it. I don't have an answer for the money at this point, but, you know, $7,400 doesn't seem like that much in the big scheme of things.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, uh, it doesn't seem like that much in the scheme of things, and I have faith that we will, uh, get plenty of more donations. I think there's a lot of support out there, and there's a lot of support that will still come.
I mean, at the end of the day, when the next $7,500 comes in, it would go to pay for this change order. So I mean, we will track that money coming in. It's, it's more or less if the city wants to basically front that, that cash, that it's, you know, the money isn't in that memorial fund. Just like we approved that one in that, that first meeting, that they didn't have enough dollars to, to go, go forward with the project. We just kind of approved it saying, "We'll carry the project until more donations come in." So I, if they feel strongly, I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just, I think it's more or less, this, the council has to be aware that they're, they're putting up this doll, these dollars for that, that group for the time being until more donations come in.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, you know, it is a small amount. We're, we're, let's get it, get it over the, over the goal line here and get exactly what this, like, to your point, Councilman Erickson, they, they've worked hard at this, and, um, as first, next $7,400 comes right to, right to the city, I guess, to pay that back as opposed to the other things of the project that need to happen for, for the next year. So, um, anyone interested in making a motion on this?
I'll make a motion for Option A, to approve the change order and to increase the overall cost of the Veterans Memorial Project to $7,425.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, eight D, Eureka Avenue Plan Specs and Authorizing Bid. Ryan.
Uh, Mayor City Council, tonight, we have in front of you the Eureka Avenue Improvement Projects with the request of approving plans and specifications and authorize ad for bid. As you are aware, obviously, the Eureka Avenue improvements will include full reconstruction of the streets and added pedestrian facilities, and at the ped crossing within the corridor, there will be a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, the yellow push-button crossing. Uh, also, there will be shoreline limestone overlooks, parking spaces added. Uh, so the combination of Rice Creek, City of Forest Lake, and DNR, there's other contributing factors into the project that are providing financing for the, uh, DNR overlooks and, uh, parking spaces, uh, along that corridor. Uh, the anticipated schedule for the project is as laid out in the memo. Uh, the schedule is dependent upon finalizing the roadway easement acquisition from the DNR for the portion of that roadway and the DNR property, where we're still waiting to obtain that easement and utility license agreement. Uh, last, uh, coordination we've had with the state DNR is they anticipated something in October to get that from the DNR easement federal funding review completed. Uh, and then also, with, with state aid review, we're expecting that approval next week. Uh, but then would move forward with bidding the project and the possible award at the October thirteenth meeting, uh, obviously depending on where we are with the DNR easement. So tonight, we bring forward, uh, to keep the project moving in efforts to get the surcharge placed, that, uh, pawn award, and that'd be October, November work. And then that, we let that sit for nine months. Uh, construction, heavy construction would start in 2026. Uh, we do have the specifications and the contract set up that the final wear course would be placed in 2027. With the tight, uh, construction schedule, we'd be placed within '26. And just making sure that if there's anything that needs to be dealt with prior to placing the wear course, we have a good weather, uh, come early, uh, spring of '27 before we play, place the wear course. So tonight, we're here to have the city council approve plans and specs and authorize ad for bid for the Eureka Avenue Improvement Project.
Thank you, Ryan. Council.
Mr. Mayor, I could just add quickly, um, notably, there's not any lighting associated with this project this time. I think Ryan and I discussed that, and we think it's, um, okay to move forward without that element of the project here, um, right now, and we'll, we'll add that in as appropriate later. Uh, we'll be bringing that back to you at the next work session. But we have a need to move this forward and keep the project schedule on. As you can see, um, you know, it, it would be, it's gonna be tight just to get the, the surcharge on. They, obviously, they can do that into the winter season a little bit, but another month even delay could really be a problem.
We would not wanna be in a situation having to place surcharge material on frozen ground.
Right. And I know there's also a lot of question, I think, in the community, rightly so, about is it the right timing to do this project in 2026 versus, um, maybe 2027, where we, you know, we're gonna have 97 will be shut down again, um, you know, in the summer of '26, at the same time this would be shut down. Uh, but I, I feel strongly that we should be bidding this out, testing the bidding climate, and making sure we can get this project done with inflation, um, the way it's been and the volatility of the, uh, markets. I just, it'd be risky to just say, "We're punting this whole thing to '27," and then hope we can, remember, we have a fixed amount of money that we can use to pay for this project. And right now, if Ryan's estimates are okay, and when the market hasn't gone too crazy on us, we can do this project with really very little, if any, city dollars into it. Pushing this out a year risks us not being able to do that without city funds. And so, um, that's, it's a lot more nuanced than, than the public might wanna digest sometimes when they get to the exit and they go, "Ah, I can't go anywhere. This makes me mad." Um, but there are reasons we're, we're doing it this way and wanna put it out there. So if the bids come back and aren't real great, you know, we'll, we'll have a different conversation, but, um...
I do wanna, just, uh, minor correction there, just because some of this was a lot moving in, in progress. With the estimate right now, there is anticipated, it has, would require city funding because of the Great River Energy, uh, power, or power line relocation, where they originally gave us an estimate of $150,000 in April 2024. Well, then, when they actually went and put the agreement for us to execute together, they came back at $378,000. But then we argued that a little bit, so then they sent a revised agreement, and now we're standing at $307,000. So that's something that's, uh, went a different direction than our original conversations with them. So I just wanna do, bring that up, that specifically right there. So, uh, we would still have to work through that agreement, too.
Questions, thoughts, council?
Yeah, I mean, timing of it's tough, but I, I agree with it. We need to move forward with it. I use that road, you know, pretty regularly these days, as many in Forest Lake are. But it's gonna be just a, a tough, tough summer. And if we wait another year and those numbers keep crawling up, it's gonna be some unhappy people about that as well. So I, I guess I'd be, I'd be in favor of moving forward with the approval of the plans and specs.
So do we, um, I don't know, question for both, either Mark or, um, Ryan? I mean, we tied, let's say we do, we tied to this. I, I am, I am a bit concerned about construction next year. I really, really am. I think that the, what's the biggest challenge that we're gonna have, as we did early on when we shut down 97, was all that traffic that went Hornsby to the south and Elm Crest and all that. They're gonna be able to get to Everton, but they're gonna be using all these neighborhood routes, which is gonna put some safety concerns, because those roads are not built to try, handle that kind of traffic with all that residential. So I, I am concerned about this project in '26. That I'm just being, and if, if, I mean, will this be completely closed with that app? Like, will Eureka be completely closed as well? So you have 97 completely closed, and you have Eureka, which is the main way people are using, one of the main ways people are using to get into town. To have both those closed, I'm just concerned about the pressure we're pushing on residential, um, areas with all this traffic.
Yes, certainly a, a fair concern. Um, and we've looked at, at different ways, and, you know, asked the critical questions of MinDOT if there was any other way that we could do more work this winter, um, on 97 or this fall. And, you know, I, I got an email back with about a dozen reasons we couldn't do it that way. Um, I, I do think, in fairness to MinDOT, they did do their due diligence and looked hard at whether or not that could be done. If we could at least get to Fenway, that would... if we could at least get to Fenway, that way Fenway would be the main reliever, and that's much more, there's not driveways onto Fenway, it's, it's more of a collector road, but yeah, it, it just doesn't look like that's going to be in play here, you know, we can do our best to try to minimize those impacts, we could, you know, work with the contractor on Eureka to see what, what time they need to start and trying to get 97 going earlier, but I, I hate to make any promises, it's going to be, there's going to be a month or two or three there where it's going to be, you know, both of those are going to be shut down.
Mayor City Council?
I think one thing to think about, too, is when we did the detour and went live for the Highway 97 project, the first week of the project is when all that traffic was taking the gravel roads and around, right, and that's probably going to happen that first week, but week two, week three, the traffic that's going down the residential neighborhoods, if they're not going there because they live there or visit, have a reason to go that particular area, they're going to learn that this wasn't the way to go, and then they're going to go find their other alternative route, which is probably going to be Broadway, right? My concern if we wait till 2027 to start this project, you got County Road 32, and if you drive that right now and you see how much traffic 32's taken, where are they really going to go then until we're out of there? With the surcharge being nine months, you're really not getting into Eureka until into July, first week of August, so they're going to have a substantial head start on us, they're going to be able to start in May, whenever load restrictions are pulled, they should be able to get, you would think, through Fenway, right? I can't guarantee that, but they should have some substantial headway on Highway 97 than they did this year, because we didn't start till second week or third week in June of the season, right, and that was the area they had the deep excavation and the muck in, that's why things are where they're at right now, they don't have the, that type of situation on the east side of the project, so that's, there's some more things to think about, will Eureka Avenue last another summer? I just drove it again tonight, and I don't want to know what that road's going to look like after this winter, like, we might be out there anyways doing something, whether we like it or not, maybe it's a, just emergency overlay or something, but longer you wait with that, there's more other things that are going to compound, obviously, costs aren't going to go down, so those are just other things to think about in the big picture of everything else that's going to happen in and around Eureka Avenue between now and 2028.
Any additional thoughts? So, so again, I guess the question is, we, we can authorize this, but we're not 100% committing ourselves to do something in '26, is that correct?
And at this point, it doesn't cost us anything really substantial to get the bid, right, see what it, see what it's telling us about the market, go from there.
All right, with that, anyone?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the plans and specs and authorize an ad for bid for Eureka Avenue.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, staff updates, we've got a lot of staff here now, finally, so that's great, so maybe, Mark, with that, we'll just start with you, kind of different than normal, just to.
Yeah, so, you know, great timing tonight, we had the headshots ahead of time, so everyone, the council got to meet Ellie, our new finance director, but welcome aboard Ellie Larkum, and she's already hit the ground running and has got a lot of great thoughts already and is diving in headfirst, and we're excited to have her on board, so welcome Ellie to the dais. And I think we'll ask Abby to introduce her new staff.
Abby?
Oh, right now. I think just right before the meeting, introduce you all to Stephen Gilmore, our new Assistant Community Development Director, Stephen's first day on the job, so we, it's still going to be quite a learning curve coming from Florida, but welcome him.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
All right, I know I'm kind of doing this, Jolene, why don't you go ahead, we'll start normal.
Thanks. Just want to remind council and the community that our budget survey is live, so please share our social media post about that, we've tripled our responses so far from last year, so we're up to 78 responses, but we know that our community has strong opinions on the budget, so share the post, spread the word, and ask constituents to participate in the survey so we can have some good results to bring to the council at our, our workshop next week. That's all I have.
Dave?
Just one update, Belts grand reopening was scheduled for the 11th of September, this, I think, Thursday, that's going to get postponed, they're still, they're moving along really well on the playground and the servicing, but there's no way they're going to be done by this Thursday, so stay tuned, Kyle will get that rescheduled then, and everybody be made aware when that gets rescheduled. That's all I have.
Jolene, can we get some social media on that? Because I saw Senator Housley shared something today about it, so.
Just sending a message to Kyle to let me know the details tomorrow so I can get that updated.
Okay. Anything else, Abby, tonight?
Just a couple things, we do have still two vacancies, one in the community development, our planner position, and then also the building official position in Building Inspections Division, active, ongoing application, seminal processes to garner, cast a wider net with our candidate pool, I will be meeting with Jolene and Wendy, our new HR Generalist, later this week to kind of talk about maybe other strategies we can employ in both of those recruitments. Also, it's kind of our, I think maybe you mentioned this the last time, it's our, kind of our push season of development, and so everybody's starting to fight whether, currently right now, we have four or five active residential Platts and one commercial Platts, Planning Commission does have a meeting this week, and then we have full meetings in October as well, so you're going to start to see some things coming forward before you, with quite a number of developments that still want to get dirt moving this year, I think there's some that think that they might get some, some building permits even, that, that's still, the jury's still out on that, but definitely you're going to have some, quite a bit of dirt moving around yet this fall in Forest Lake, so happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions, oh, great, and welcome, Stephen, and Chief Newman.
One update, on Saturday, approximately 1,500 hours, Forest Lake Fire was called for a structure fire out down 235th on Hunter's Hill, when crews arrived, they had a fully involved garage fire moving into the structure, mutual aid was called in from Scandia, Hugo, Wyoming, Lindstrom, and Chicago City, took about approximately three hours to bring the fire under control, there were no injuries and equipment ran great at that fire.
Great, thank you to those other agencies for their help. Ryan, anything else?
Mayor City Council, no further updates unless you have any questions.
Ellie, welcome.
No updates from finance, just excited to do more budget talk next session.
Great. Amanda?
No updates.
Anything else, Mark?
Just a reminder, or let the public know that we're looking at October 25th, Saturday, it's a save the date right now, I still got a few more pieces to make sure that we can get a venue, perhaps a consultant to agree to that date, but it looks like that's lining up for staff and council, so I want everyone to put a block on their calendar for Saturday, October 25th, for our council retreat.
Councilmember Weller?
No updates.
Councilmember Lento?
No updates.
Councilmember Larson?
As Abby said, just a reminder that Wednesday, we do have a Planning Commission meeting starting at 6 o'clock.
Right, Councilmember Erickson?
Just one of a personal nature, last Sunday, was blessed to become a grandpa for the first time, so Lachlan, yeah, thank you, Lachlan Aaron Erickson was born at 11:40, coming in at 11 pounds, 2 ounces, so, yeah, he's a healthy one, so, thank you.
Don't really have anything other than I mentioned earlier, the, the groundbreaking at the Vets Memorial was a great event and looking forward to that project to get kicked off, so, anything else, and looking forward, motion adjourned, adjourned?
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, we're adjourned.